I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do...have any changes they want to make?
Uh, just a question.
The calendar... Every year we can't...
Interactive.
We take out, that's really what it is, we take out snow days and...
Okay, you're right, and we were, so we're gonna approve it again.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Call.
Motion by Munda, second by Anderson. Can wait? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Under recognition.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, we have a couple of recognitions for this evening and, um... Start by one of our tech campus teams that are award winners. We have a large number of students that attend the tech campus and are fortunate enough to experience our academic programming here as well as some technical programming over our tech campus. Uh, Mr. Thomas is here with a number of our students that were recognized this year. And so, not only later in the meeting will we learn a little bit more about tech campus, but we're honored and fortunate to have a number of students that are here. So, Mr. Thomas, you come forward and help us, and a board member, want to come help us hand out some certificates here? What's this, so this first group are the program students of the year. Can you tell us what that kinda means, Mr. Thomas?
I sure can. That at the tech campus, there's twenty programs. Each program has a teacher or two or three, depending on the program. Each teacher picks their best student of the entire year. So, Lauren had these five students as the best students in their program for the school year. Claudia Barcenas, right over there, and her brother, right next to her, Jose Barcenas. Claudia was in the criminal justice program, Jose, early childhood education. Daisy couldn't be here tonight, she had to work, so she couldn't come. We'll get to Lauren some more, but Lauren Constantino, introduction to policing, which is the year two of the criminal justice program, student of the year, and Grace Winkle. They changed the name of your program, application development and 3D gaming. Outstanding students.
Lauren? Good job. Thank you very much. Stay busy. I'm sure you will. And Grace? What's my, what's your new game? See that one yet?
Yeah.
Alright, cool. Congratulations. Great job.
I will mention, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Claudia is a junior, uh, so, and the other students are all seniors, so Claudia will be back next year going to tech campus. She's babysitting tonight, their mom and dad had to work. So, they still made it tonight to the program. I should also, I do wanna mention several other things. Besides these, all of program students of the year, there's roughly, uh, the numbers in my office, like twenty-four hundred students at tech campus. And the administration there goes through a process to decide who is their top student of the year in, uh, at the technology campus. That student interviews, I know twice, there were double interviews there, and a whole long process, a portfolio process. And they have to meet many qualifications that they require at tech campus. And this year, our Warren student, Lauren Constantino, the tech campus student of the year. Lauren is in basically two-second year of the criminal justice programming. Her goal is, I'm gonna let her speak a second here, she plans, and I know she's gonna make it, would like to be an FBI agent down the road. So, uh, she's got goals, and I know she will meet these goals. She works very hard, an outstanding A-plus student, both here at this school and out at the tech campus. Wanna add a couple things about...
By the way, Lauren should be prepared because I actually, she had to give this speech, or a similar version of it, to the board of directors, the superintendents are the, on the board of directors, uh, for the tech campus. We meet, obviously, because it's kind of a cooperative venture of all of ours, and it was so nice when, at that meeting, they introduced a Warren student, and it was Lauren that won. And she had to give her spiel, so I wanted to make sure that she gave her spiel back on our ground. So now's your chance.
Well, it won't be the exact spiel, 'cause I don't remember it, but I'll come up with something similar. So, as I said, I was in intro to criminal justice as a junior, and I was intro to policing as a senior. And I've always wanted to be a police officer, and the great thing about being in the two classes was, I realized that I didn't just wanna be a police officer, and I didn't just wanna be on the streets the entire rest of my life. So, in the fall, I'll be going to Indian University, and I'll be...
Falling down.
And I'll be double majoring in psychology and criminal justice, and I will also be learning Turkish, and I'm going into Army ROTC, so I'm doing a whole bunch. So, I'm going into the Army, and I wanna be in human intelligence, and then hopefully be into the FBI for counterterrorism. So, long, long path, hopefully we'll get there, fingers crossed. Probably won't happen exactly as I want it to be, but because of tech campus, it's definitely helped me get into the field that I wanted, and realize that I actually do love what I wanna do.
Excellent. I do wanna mention another area here. We, they have skills competition every year. We send a gr- a bunch of, I'll maybe, I think we sent thirty students to Springfield this year to compete. And Grace Winkle, uh, took first place in the programming, let me read exactly, you took first place in intera- interactive application and video game development. So, she took first place there. She also qualified last year, so she's qualified two years in a row for that. It's very difficult, especially the area she's in, with the, um, uh, gaming and programming and all that. I walk into those classes occasionally at tech campus, and I have not a clue what they're doing out there. I can't, and then these guys are really involved in that stuff. So, Grace is going next week to Louisville, Kentucky, to compete amongst the entire United States. She took first in the state of Illinois. So, good luck there. Why don't you say a word or two?
So, um, for our competition, the last whole semester of tech campus, we, um, got to work on our video games, and I led, I was the leader of a group of me plus three others. And we worked on our game, we made all the art styles, like the visuals, the sprites, the coding, everything was made by ourselves, we didn't download anything. We used the Unity engine, and then we made our own sounds, too. And we were able to mix it all together and create a really fun game that's playable by anyone. And, um, so we also had to show a video of, like, a trailer, so we're also using video and, like, CGI kinda things to develop, like, a video, just kinda like, if we were to sell it, that's how we would propose it, as a next step for the, like, game event itself, I guess. And so, next week, um, me and one other people, one other person from our team are going down, and we're gonna compete. And I believe it's like an expo where we have our game out for a full day, and we just sit there and answer questions all day, and we'll see how it goes. I think we can do really well. The name of the game is called Mo's Story. It's about a cyborg, and we use, like, you have this little, kinda like a flashlight it looks like, and you aim it and throw it with your mouse and keyboard, and it bounces off the walls at about ninety degrees angles, sometimes a little less. And it bounces, and you have to use the bounces to hit enemies, switches, um, grapple blocks, you can only jump in certain areas. And, so, yeah, it takes a really long time to complete.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The tech campus, by the way, um, under our strategic plan, one of the pieces that's really exciting for us is, uh, you know, we, with the certifications piece and the job experiences that our students get at the tech campus, are experiences that really are unique for us, and a lot of these professional certifications that are on our strategic plan data come from those students that are out at tech campus in a variety of programs. So, uh, it's neat every year when we look at our educational experience of our kids, that we combine those elements. The next, uh, recognition that we'd like to have, I believe if I can get to that. So, for those of you that were at our, uh, centennial gala, you realize that there was a really special part of that gala for us that, uh, started as kind of just a brainstorm about some things, and people getting together and doing a little homework on what were some other ways that other organizations celebrated their centennial or other very special kind of marks in the history of their organization. And one thing that we were able to find was, we said, well, some places have kind of a really neat documentary that kinda tells the story of their organization. And so, obviously, when we were having our centennial, we were thinking, well, we knew we were starting to work on this book project, and we knew that we were getting together and gonna have this, uh, big gathering, if you will. And we had the slides and the traveling museum and a number of things that we had going on. But, at the time, what we didn't know was, well, if we wanted to get this documentary done, who can we kind of ask for some help to do this? And so, we went through a couple of staff members, a number of people helped in trying to just get the ball rolling. And the neat thing is that, at the end of the day, Asden Ragnathan, my close Asden? Asden Ragnathan, who, by the way, is in, come up here, Asden. Asden is in our class of 2020s, or, so he is right now going to be a sophomore, uh, over at Oak Plain, was the, our student executive producer and director and everything that goes into this. This was really an incredible endeavor. Now, I, I say that only because when it first started, we were thinking, okay, who else is, you know, who else is gonna work on this? Are there any other students that are gonna contribute to this? And I'm sure there probably would have been some others that could have, but the bottom line, what it was from, from Ms. Ferrara and Ms. Love, who were communicating back to me, they were like, no, no, we have faith that Asden's gonna get this done. And a- at the time, we were worried about deadlines, we were worried about bringing together, you know, a lot of people to the auditorium to celebrate this event, and we really, at the time, weren't quite sure. And then as time got closer, it was, nope, Asden's just gonna be there. And the number of hours that he put in after school, on the weekends, um, to make sure that we had the deadline, and that the quality of the documentary was exceptional. The way that he pulled the pictures together in the program and met the, obviously, that we were probably working up till the last minute almost to make sure we get it done. But that's probably not uncommon for producers of documentaries, is to make sure that they're working all the way up to the last minute to make sure that the final product was as great as it possibly could be. And it's just such an honor for me, uh, at this point in time, to publicly, we tried to say something at the gala itself, but obviously, uh, the event itself wasn't really enough for us to say, to Asden, congratulations so much, and thank you for all you did for us.
Well, I was, I was at the gala, and I was with Jean in reception, which was like thirty minutes before it was gonna start, and this was Jean. Fantastic, is he done? So, she's been like there for about twenty minutes, and then you got it done, you did a fantastic job. Thank you very much.
Just a little recognition, though, before I get to, uh, to that piece of it, I do wanna make sure that, uh, I recognize Jean Love, because from the get-go through the gala, uh, those of you that were part of it know that, you know, she was such a critical piece of every element of that, and, uh, we, I didn't say thank you dearly enough for all the hours she put in connecting people through that whole process, which was obviously one of our alumni, our students, our staff, our community at large, and board, and all the dignitaries that were fortunate enough to join us that evening. So, she was, so let's give Jean a round of applause. We all took, every step of the way, every step of the way that we, uh, had this project going on, if you went over to room, what's the room over there at Oak Plain? What is that, Asden, what's that room number? What is it? Two-twenty-five, is that the room? The, uh... One-twelve? Well, I don't know, the room that's on the end there, Mr. Munda knows what the room is, but the, uh, technology room over there. And really, so many hours in the last two weeks of that project that Jean Love and Asden were working, but they were also working, uh, with somebody who worked tirelessly and put in so much energy and, uh, support and mentoring of Asden. And so, it's my pleasure to bring up Jean Farah.
Jean, you're the hardest-working woman in show business.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your work.
Good, thank you, Mr. Gray.
At your chosen field, are you going down the filmmaking route? Is, you know, you've got a great start, great resume started. We'll expect a kick, you know, a commission from that. Not, not kickback, I didn't say kickback. Reception of visitors, we're to the point of our agenda, anybody sign in today?
Yeah, we had nobody sign in tonight.
Okay. Moving on to the president's report, we've got one topic we wanna talk about today, and that is our committees. So, outside of the board meeting, we've got a number of different committees that people can attend. I thought how we would do this, I, I hope everybody had a chance to kinda look at the list. I thought what we'd do is first look at, um, any of the committees that currently don't have anybody identified as an ongoing board member, and see if it makes sense to fill those. And then it's always a nice time if we wanna switch things up a little bit. Um, so we've had, uh, uh, board members representing certain committees for a while. Some of these committees meet one time, some meet much more than that. So, um, let's look at the bottom list, under the ad hoc committees, there's one that we've added. It's called the alternative energy committee, and it really, I thought the last board meeting... I'm not sure. Actually, I do know, because somebody come up to me and, and let me know. But I thought we had a really good discussion last time. I think this committee will be needed to have some continuity from conversation to conversation. So, last time we met, we talked a lot about the solar energy project, and Jim has volunteered to be on that committee. We don't have anybody identified right now on the construction committee, the diversity committee, food service, or negotiations. Jim actually also came up to me and said he would like to be a member on the food service committee. Okay. Excellent.
I didn't even know, Janita, that there was actually a diversity committee from back years ago, so, but, yeah, so that was awesome. When we saw that there, we didn't even have to recreate it, but Jean has obviously been a part of that.
So, the construction committee usually was only in existence when we had a big project going on, so it's kind of a, doesn't necessarily have to have somebody unless you, somebody just wants to be ready.
Well, you know, Mike and I were talking just prior to the meeting, and I thought, Mike had asked me, I thought we, I had thought, when I looked at this list, that I had seen, like, kind of an ongoing facility slash grounds-type committee. I'm like, yeah, Mike, it's right in the list, and I looked in the list, and there was nothing like that in the list. Would it be possible that that construction committee, 'cause we've developed this five-year facility plan, I don't know how often that committee meets, or it's, I don't know if we call it a committee, or we don't call it a committee, but I wouldn't mind, or could we kind of call that construction slash grounds maintenance committee, facility maintenance committee?
Yeah, we just call it our long-term project, our project list. If we, internally, we meet once a month, we actually have a fairly regular routine at it, and so it's not, I mean, it wouldn't be, it might be valuable for the board to see. We can obviously adjust, you know, the, the meetings that we have, the times of them, we can obviously adjust them from where they're going, if it's, board members wanna...
I do, I love the idea of maintaining that facility plan, it's like three to four years out, we're knocking off some big, big items and planning for those ahead of time, so that's, that's important. Then the only other one that we have on here, and we talked a little bit in closed session, on the negotiations committee, um, I'm not sure that we would identify any one person here right now. I think we'll hold on that one, once we understand timing and the calendar of when we think we're gonna start that process. On the other side, we've got the IASB, CDAL. Okay, so wait, so we filled all the blank ones, so now we've got basically the committees where people have been representing. Does any, I'll just throw it out this way, does anybody that has been on an ongoing committee wanna switch it up?
I've been on CDAL for a long time, and they actually have meetings where you go as a governing board member and you vote on, so it's, it's a much bigger group, it's like thirty, all the representing districts can send somebody, which I haven't been to religiously, so I, if somebody else is interested in, uh, interacting with CDAL for us, uh, I would be more than happy to, uh...
I would love to do it, but I'd have to abstain on every note.
I'd be happy to abdicate, I'd be happy to go on, it doesn't, you know, I'm...
Did you do that as a regular, or because you were the president? At one...
Well, I was the, I just became the regular at some point, and it doesn't have to be the president. I mean, you could send the superintendent, you could send anyone from the district to be a representative, really. It doesn't necessarily have to be a board member, but it always, it has been, 'cause every representative is there. And if, as long as they have a quorum, it, you know, it doesn't, you just get, you're just listening, really, 'cause they, they have a smaller group that meets that actually does the board work like this, and when they have decisions, they come out and make presentations to the bigger group, and then they vote on it, but...
Where do they meet?
At CDAL. Right, right behind us here.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, I, I've been a member of the, um, insurance committee, we've actually met very frequently, um, and I've had a tough time making that, 'cause a lot of times it's like at two-thirty in the afternoon, and this one seems to be quarterly, so I'd...
And it's in the evenings, too, so...
I would trade you for the CDAL, not that you have to take over the insurance.
I'll take the, I want the insurance committee, I want that, I want it bad.
I'll, I'll, I'll take on the CDAL committee, and I'll, I'll depart from the insurance committee, which leaves that one open, if somebody wants to think about that.
I'll be... I think Paul would be the right guy for the audit committee, too, 'cause it only meets once. I mean, it's right when the audit starts, and he understands audits, because, you know, he's, he's a fine...
Understand audits, or 'cause it only meets once, that you'd like, yeah?
Both.
Okay.
And I don't wanna be on it.
Left-handed compliment.
Because I'm not... Because I, I don't like accounting.
Okay. Any other changes by anybody? Everybody, Barb, you good?
I'd like to go. I am on it now, but it's not noted. Curriculum committee, please.
Okay. Yeah, you know, and I, and, you, you know, you'll see a name on a committee here, but these are open meetings, you're welcome to come and sit and join different committee meetings as, as we go on. We just try to identify somebody that's gonna be consistently participating, so you're always welcome to join and participate.
I'll be very honest, I personally have not done, done, you've attended the tech campus, um, I have not attended the, is that something a board member should be involved in, maybe?
I don't think so. They used to come out, you know, the tech campus used to come, go down the, 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 and update people, so that's, you know, I, I don't think right now there's necessarily any, they have, I've never, they've never said anything to be like, you guys are board members participating or any tech campus.
Okay, good. Other comments?
I love my policy.
I've attended that one a few times, that's an interesting, there's a, there's a interesting conversation there, it's a lot of policy, a lot of rule. Okay, good. Back to the agenda, we're down to committee reports, insurance committee.
Well, yeah, in addition to the two, uh, such events that are there for April eleventh and April eighteenth meeting, we also have meetings on, uh, May thirty-first and June sixth, um, so again, a lot of meetings, like, context of those meetings are...
Just looking at different options for the future, we're all sort of, a little bit with the high increases in the rates we had the last two years, so trying to look at alternatives, both, uh, that would be effective and efficient for us.
And the, I think our last meeting was really productive, because we just sat down and kind of prioritized from all of our perspectives.
What are our priorities for insurance plan, which was kinda...
Kinda nice to...
I, I agree. Not today, and I think the, on that discussion, is we're trying to create scenarios that are win-win scenarios, we get better coverage for less cost for the person that's paying the premium and for the district. There are, there are options we've got out there, so we need to start getting creative, but it wasn't a very long, wasn't a very long meeting, but, uh, real productive.
And if, the other thing is, we do, you know, in the co-op itself, I know that there are other districts are, you know, that we're not the only district having those conversations right now, we're not, just across anywhere, not even just the co-op, but... The other piece was our safety committee annually, we have our safety committee, so we have our meeting also on June sixth, where we annually review our policies and...
Protocol there and... By our dean.
When we, when the safety committee, you know, previous to the recent years, it used to be somewhat not just about the safety plan, but about the whole building itself. You know, which part of the safety plan is the security of the building itself, which is, it's this once-a-year thing, it's kinda got into updating the plan, which is something that needs to be done. But I think, you know, and I'd be happy to be on this, since I know a little bit about, you know, building security, that maybe we expand that safety committee into being a little more, you know, just at least doing some research and checking out what some of the other security measures are that, that might be available for situations that might arise, because I think by the time they happen, it's way too late, right? So, I think that, and there's people that'll come in and do surveys, and, and, so I think it's something that, uh, that maybe we could expand that to more than once a year, and if, if, if it would be all right with everybody, I'd like to jump on that, and, yeah.
In fact, the, the, you know, not that it's, uh, one of the most interesting pieces we had to that conversation really didn't have to do with our plan, it had to do with exactly that, John, with a couple areas of, you know, that we were trying to... It was a great conversation, just, you know, brainstorming some ideas, so I think that'll be great.
I'd like to be part of that, 'cause I'm, I know a little bit about door hardware and security stuff.
No, it's just a few items. We have, we did have one FOIA since our last meeting from the Daily Herald that was interested in drivers' ed, staffing, and salaries from, uh, two thousand and twelve through seventeen, so that was a FOIA that came into, uh, the district. Just a couple other updates. We do, um, if you've, if you've been online, we did have our website rollout, so we're still D121.org, but if you haven't been on there, it's obviously a different look, much more exciting for us. Credit, uh, greatly to, to Rob, and, uh, Kim, and Rico, and other, other people who have put the time and behind the scenes, and all the offices for updating their information. But it's a great start for us, and we're excited about it, and we're excited because come registrat- registration time, we think we'll have, you know, whatever work that needs to have figured out, we'll be ready for it. So that, we, we were, stayed on track and managed to knock that one off. We also, for those of you that pulled in tonight, and were able to see the lines where you parked, that, that project has been on our projects list for a number of years, the parking lot resealing, and so we were able to get that done this year at both campuses, and so it's nice to be able to do that. And obviously, one of those up, one of those things that, you know, you stay up on, so we're dealing with fewer problems later. And the carpeting, for walking down the hallway here, you might have seen that there was, there's already been removal here, and I'm gonna look to the team for the overall process, Rob, or Carol, anybody update me on where we're at at the other building or here in regards to schedules on the carpeting itself?
I believe you're like, can the second floor is completely removed?
They're moving carpet, and they're.
Yeah. Yeah, so they, they put a coating on the cement. They have, you know, we're on the floor, put the coating on at All Plains, starting here at all, and we're waiting for carpet delivery. There is, the carpet is ready at All Plains Network. We'll start at All Plains. Report starts here, and this will be the second phase here of the project plus completion date in my contract is August seventh. August will be everything up there. So, uh, it'll be moving over the next month, month or two.
We'll just move through sections of the building over the course of the summer, and work around some schools with the moves and stuff like that, to be able to demo, and then wait for carpet install, ten minutes, and wait to provide.
Libraries.
Also, just, we're rolling out, and I'm gonna pull this out real quick. We do this every year. I'm gonna hand out last year's, just to remind the board that during the summer, we go into a partnership with the other organizations and contribute both information and funds to the keeping posted publication which goes out, and if you look in there on our information, that's in there. Three pages worth of information that we get in that packet. We'll make sure we pull together some of our most critical information for this year's mailing, but that's, just wanted to remind the board that that.
Yeah. I recognize one of the pictures I'm on, so, yeah.
So we're, and obviously, last year, we were promoting more of the centennial, the upcoming centennial, and we've had some leadership changes and administrative opportunities, things of that nature. So there's some things that obviously we'd wanna get, would love to get in there, but there's also financial information and some other just general information about the district. So we do think it's a good partnership with the village to put this out each year. The other thing before our presentation, just wanted to remind the board, most people have responded about our orientation, which is scheduled for the twentieth. We have an orientation scheduled at four o'clock is our start time. We're excited about it. It's actually the timing of it works out really well for us, because we're, as a board, you've been spending a lot of good time and focus on kind of re- restructuring yourselves, and a couple of you are going through your trainings and reorienting yourselves to the board work, which is always something that we like to keep, you know, on your, on your radar. So we put together a tentative agenda, just starting at four o'clock, and our hope is in the first hour for us to go through each of our four major district offices and give you a really broad overview of our work, and maybe a few documents that go along with it. And then for any board members that come, we'll make sure we have a light dinner there about five o'clock, and then from five to six, we wanted to talk more about things like, you know, the board, board activity, board interaction, board interaction with, you know, our administrative team, best practices on, from a board member's perspective, code of conduct, things, things that are really fresh in a few people's minds now, which would be a great, great time to do that, I think, next week. So for those of you that can make it, it's on the twentieth at four o'clock. If you haven't responded, please just let Gene know, so we can make sure we have enough food for whoever.
Get my invite.
You wanna hold the meeting at Wrigley Field?
Yeah. Mr. Thomas, thanks to your patience. We also annually like to give the board a presentation about our tech campus programming, so Mr. Thomas was nice enough to stay around to make sure he gives the board such an update.
Just have a few extra notes from, in regards to the tech campus. First off, I would really like to thank the Board of Education for your support of our students that go to the tech campus, and I would really like to thank for their excellent help Willie Gehrig and Mr. Parrott, Mr. Keely. They have always been extremely helpful, and if I've had problems, issues, they, and Dr. Algrim also can count on them for their support in this area. And we've got a thriving group of students that go to the tech campus. We send more students than any other high school in Lake County, by over a hundred usually. They love us out there. We keep a lot of their teachers hired out there, and so they're happy with us out there. This past year, we sent two hundred and seventy-seven students to tech campus. I checked last week, and I think we had two hundred and eighty-six signed up. That'll fluctuate a little bit. Try to get as close to the three hundred range as, we float right near that area of sending students. One year, we sent four hundred and three, but as you mentioned, they have twenty programs out there. Our students, the juniors and seniors, take the tech campus as their elective if they choose to take it. The top programs for students of Warren sent, we sent forty-two students into the auto services program, Auto Services One and Auto Services Two. They work on, you know, cars, car engines, anything to do with car motors and that so forth. We sent thirty-five students into the cosmetology program. I'll just cover the top five areas here. We sent thirty students in the criminal justice programs out there. That's leading in the, you know, police field, criminal justice area. We sent twenty-five students in the culinary arts programs, and we sent twenty students in the certified nursing assistance program, which has become, it's bigger and bigger every year in order to be a registered nurse. That course is mandatory, so you have to take that, as per Illinois law anyways, I know that. So we've got a great group of kids that go out there. They love it out there. School's very helpful. We would add one other thing. They have a National Honor Society, a technical national honor society. We had warranted twenty-five students in that, more than any other high school, so we lead the category in most every area out of tech campus, so I'm pleased to say. It's, and thank you so much. Any questions at all? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Algrim. On to new business. So it's the approval of the twenty sixteen seventeen final public school calendar. So. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
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 Approval of memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education, Warren Township High School, District one twenty-one, and Lake County, Illinois, and the Warren Township High School. About six weeks.
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Warren Township High School, District number one twenty-one, and Warren Township High School Federation of Teachers, the Council of the Lake County Federation of Teachers, Local 504, IFT-AFT/AFV/COO, term of agreement.
Second.
Monda?
Walls?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next one, I recognize this for the last couple, it's the prevailing wage, so. Questions, anybody?
Move to approve the resolution adopting the prevailing wage rates for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed for work at Warren Township High School, District one twenty-one, for twenty seventeen eighteen.
Second.
By Walls, second by Wilson. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the next one I rec. And funding for.
Second.
Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Title one.
Yeah, okay.
Oh.
I know, I know. It's what we all love to hear, right? Curriculum. With no child.
Yes, of course. Ooh, yes.
You and Jim. So with no child left behind going away, obviously, now there's the ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act, and with this creation of ESSA, we have to create a whole new Title One Plan. With that Title One Plan, as you probably read it, it's very lengthy. I'm sorry, you probably fell asleep, but basically, we had to give an overall programming of our overall school, like how we help all of our kids, and then it got into what's our criteria for our at-risk students. And then it said, you know what? What do you guys do for your at-risk kids? What are the programs you have in place right now? They added some things with homeless students. They added some things with our fine arts students. They added a library component to it. They added, what was the other thing? The career and technical piece, so what Alan was talking about. They're very much into teaching the whole child. So those are all of the aspects of that Title One Plan, and the process is, we have to go to the board. We have to get it approved by the board first, and then I submit it in IWS, and then they come back. I've already had a Title One personally look at it, and they said it's very thorough, but they won't give me the AOK yet until you guys approve. So, does anybody have any questions? And I wanna thank Janita, cause she kinda helped me at the very beginning. We were kinda bulleting, and I had lots of committees just to get ideas out there of what we do, cause I didn't wanna leave anything out, cause I think we do a very good job of trying to help all of our kids.
I'll just, I'll just say, I think, great job bringing that up.
Thanks. Yeah. School-wide, basically, if you have forty percent of your school that is on free and reduced lunch, then you are what's called a school-wide program. And then the money you receive from the federal government, which is the Title One money, you can use for all of your kids. Now, they have a waiver right now. It's a school-wide waiver, or the flexibility waiver, and if you're at twenty to forty percent, you could actually apply to be school-wide. However, I believe our free and reduced rate is like eighteen percent. It's right around there, so we're, we're not even qualified to do the school-wide yet. So with targeted, we can only spend the money on our at-risk students. So that's why we spend it on the school and the schoolkids, or we spend it on different programs, like the study table that we had on Tuesdays that we started this past year. We spend it on some of our reading programs. So it was those kinds of programs that we spend our money on, so. Which I don't mind targeted. I, I mean, it kinda makes it easy.
That's what you wanna do it for.
Right.
They need extra funds anyway.
Correct.
Makes total sense.
Good job, Willie.
Thanks, Willie.
Thank you, Willie.
How many hours invested in all that?
Um, it took me.
Make it look easy.
No, it took, I was working on this probably for three or four weeks. So I did two questions a day to start writing it, plus with all of the committee meetings we had with everybody. So it, it was a long process, and I'm glad it's done. I hope it's.
Could you change page three, number four?
I did notice that Alan said twenty programs. I only had eighteen of those.
Let's do the arrangement. Motion.
Move to approve the Title One Plan for Warren Township High School, District one twenty-one, as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
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 Add a variety of technical knowledge that we would not have individually as a district. So this is part of our comprehensive risk management program that we duly add, and our coverage is extensive. Our property care coverage is a billion dollars. So any of the IHSA, uh, new rules that have happened that require districts to cover, you know, carry more insurance, we, we carry much, much more insurance than that. And we get it at, you know, a very reasonable price, which is why we, we care to cover more and carry more. Some very good news, and I wanna thank especially Mary Zul for this, cause she works very hard on our workman's comp program. Our workman's comp program let down the premium decrease sixteen point two-three percent, which was a forty-four thousand dollar decrease. We had a slight increase on our property casualty, which is a very expensive property casualty program, including our school board legal. That increased four point two-five percent, which is about ten thousand dollars. So all in all, net negative to the budget, and we improved coverages, we improved programs, so all in all, a very good year, and really I've given you a lot of supporting documentation, so you can get a flavor for our claims, and for what the program is, and where our carriers are, just for your reference. So, any questions that I can answer for the board?
Very random question. If you could, like, a solar panel on your property, it'd affect our premium?
No.
He was in charge.
Renewal of property casualties, accident, and workers compensation insurance policies for one year effective July first, two thousand seventeen, September.
Walls?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway? Yes.
Yes. Item, approval of the diesel.
Uh, we received, uh.
I bid.
Seventy-five.
We received a bid on our diesel fuel, we use about, I think it's a claim about 75,000 gallons of diesel fuel per year on our buses. So the way the bid works is, it's a price above the oldest index, which is the oil petroleum industry standard index, so the fuel fluctuates, but the premium will not. So the lowest response to the bidder was piece, piece oil, they are, they handle science, they handle light blocks, they're local, this is one of the important pieces for us, so based on their bid and our bidding of them, we're recommending we order the piece oil.
Probably in there.
It was concert. Concert was 5.1 cents higher or lower. So there is a two cents, they don't concert with bill, piece oil and lower. Concert did agree. Let me do you a little first, I'm sorry about that.
It's like that, do we ever go back to the, the current vendor and say, hey, here's the lowest bid? We're not allowed to do that? Okay. That's what I thought, just wanted to clarify that.
They bid, and they were on the bid anyway.
Yeah, they were allowed to bid, but then it's, it is what it is.
If they are the lowest bidder, we can negotiate lower with them. But...
I'll move to approve the diesel fuel bid, piece oil company as presented for 2017-18.
Second. Roll call. I said...
Mr. Munda, and second by Mr. Drake. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item. Motion. settlement agreement and general release 2017-08. Roll call.
By Drake, second by Munda.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes. Yes.
Hiring recommendation, a hiring recommendations number 232 through 230, 245 as posted.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
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 Any approval of the bills, standing of bills for 613, 2017?
I had just two general comments, questions. One was the cost of the AP exam is at $190?
Remember, the students, we charge the students for the AP exam, so we, our goal is to always break even. So this year, we were up $700, so we made $700. When we charge the student at 98, college board charges us 93, so with that five extra dollars, we pay with the proctors. So we have all of the proctor paid, and, you know, we have a lot of students who require one-on-one, and so that our proctor training is up a little bit, but we still came out to the bill for something. Yeah. We always try to break even. Last year, we were a little low, but this year, we...
It's just, I, it just, you know, when I was looking through the bills, we only had a half, you know, we have 503,000, and it was like 200 of it was that test, and I was like, wow, that's a lot of cash for that test.
And we collect all of it.
So, is that...
Money? Is it paying for people to make...
Up ease to... At, at a state level, I mean, that's...
Yes, because in June, and I bet they're probably down right now, they have a week worth of grading, so the AP psych people go to Kentucky, and the calculus people go to Denver, and they bring in all of these graders, AP graders, so they charge them, and they're there for a whole week to grade those things by you. So at least the free response is not a problem.
Right, right, well, I'm, yeah, I was, I was like, the machine, went in the little circles, and what does that take, but, so...
You're outside to circle.
Hanging Chad.
Because every test has a free response.
Sure.
You know, so they, they bring in graders all over.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we have a few of our AP teachers that have been graders or aren't graders right now.
The other one was the, is that the buses that we had approved earlier?
Those are the buses you approved.
Great.
78,000. We actually traded in the white vans, and they traded the annual 39,800, so the prize that you're paying is 38,000. So we're down 12,000.
All the vans?
We kept two. One for our district, one for 56, and 56 is going to pay us up.
I move to approve the payment of the bills for June 13th, 2017, in the amount of 503,801 dollars and 00 cents.
Second.
Motion by Drake, second by Munda. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes. Lastly, approval of the regular meeting executive session minutes of May 23rd, 2017. Anybody have any?
I'll move to approve regular... It's an executive session minutes of May 23rd, 2017.
Second.
Roll call.
Stop it.
Roll call.
By Munda, second by Wilson. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
I will abstain, I was not there for the whole executive session.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Yes, and one... By Drake, second by Anderson. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.